I would never have knocked my door.
Good evening, everyone. I thank you for coming out. We have hopefully a smooth and informative event planned for you. I know it's been quite some time since this has been done, if it hasn't been done, especially this way. We're going to begin the evening with the presentation of the colors from the high school's ROTC, followed by the National Anthem by the high school choir.
I proudly just took that of the United States of America. It is your home and the first standers, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? For so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose fresh stripes and bright stars threw the perilous fight. For the flagrant's green flags were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the whole country in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. O say, good, that star-spangled banner yet wave on the banner of the free and the home of the brave.
So before I get into my scripted remarks, I have to say I don't know who is more scared, the children or the candidates up on the stage. They have been going back and forth about who is more nervous. I hope one of them does something about the air conditioning because I'm dying right now of sweat. Good evening. Welcome to the first that we know of recently, the Keysport Area School District School Board Candidate Debate. The MAEA and MESPA unions are proud to sponsor this debate because not only is it serving as a platform for the candidates to get their names and messages out to the public, but it also has been an excellent learning tool for the speech students and honors government students here at Keysport Area High School. The students have worked hard on learning how a proper debate should be run for various environments, and then it gives them the opportunity to hone their public speaking skills, a skill that will benefit them for years to come. They have worked hard on this and we are proud of them. I want to take a minute before discussing the format this evening to thank a few who have helped to make this possible. First and foremost, we want to thank Dr. Tia Wanza, our superintendent, for permitting the use of the high school auditorium. She spoke to the students just before tonight as she has been a great supporter of their efforts. Thank you to Joseph Whitby, President of the MESPA Union, for coming to me with this idea and sticking with it and helping along the way. Thank you to Ms. Elizabeth Chiba, our speech teacher, for working side by side with us as the students and as we prepare. Thank you to the security team and custodial staff. Thank you to Mrs. Erica Goniluve for being an excellent organizer and keeping us on track. Thank you to the high school administration and the teachers for working with us and allowing the students to spend time out of class with us. Thank you to Ms. Beth Egger and Mr. John Liker for providing the sound and Ms. Egger for preparing the choir. Thank you to the ROTC program and Sergeant Jason D. Police for providing the coloring. Thank you to Mr. Mike Kazan for handling the video feed in the back. Thank you especially to the candidates for taking this chance with us. You have all been very cordial and excellent to work with thus far. Thank you to the public for providing a ton of feedback and questions along this method. And lastly, and most importantly, thank you to our students for being here this evening. So we'll get started. All 13 candidates who filed for this election were invited by US Mail to participate. All were given the opportunity if they declined to attend to give a statement as to why they wish not to. The candidates have been briefed on the procedures and regulations of the evening and I want to explain them to you as well. Each candidate will be given a two-minute time period for an open statement in which they can tell you why they are running and what they hope to achieve. The students will read a short personal bio of them before they are announced. We are scheduled 20 questions for this evening. These questions came from a random bank of student submissions, union member submissions, and public submissions. In fact, after filtering through them, it came out that six questions came from the students, seven questions came from union members, and seven questions came from the public. The candidates have been assigned a random number that they just drew a few moments ago. After each question, three candidates will be allowed to have a one-minute response. Please be advised that the clock behind us and the clock down here may vary just because of internet issues and keeping with iTunes. Each candidate will have a total of six questions during the evening. If a candidate would like to respond or rebut to any answer, each candidate has four tickets for 30-second responses. They can use them at any time after an answer has been given. They may use them all at once, which will be two minutes if it's something that they feel passionate about. But they understand that once they have used all of their four responses, that they are not permitted to respond again. Time markers at the table will keep track of the time and give warnings. Microphones will be turned off for any violations. Candidates are permitted to decline answering any question or ask for explanations or clarifications regarding any questions. The students and I all understand that no one knows everything, and in no time should someone feel embarrassed. We are all here to learn together. At the end of the debate, each candidate will be given one minute for a closing statement to wrap up the evening. If... That's my diabetic word, I apologize. And you can't turn it off. By the way, silence your votes, you can't turn diabetic word off. If the night goes quicker than expected, we are prepared with eight additional questions, which will be asked at a lightning round of 30-second responses for each candidate. What I ask of the audience and has been agreed to by the candidates is this: This is not only an informational tool, this is still a learning environment for the students and should be treated as such. No toleration will be given to outbursts from the audience or candidates. We ask that everyone act as adults and professionals. If you are unable to do this, you will be asked to remove yourself. In closing, every effort has been given to make this as professional, organized, and fair as possible. We understand that not everyone is a public speaker. We also understand that there are many options of how this could have been run. Why can't the public ask statements or questions? Why isn't it run this way, etc.? Remember, the students are being taught different forms of debate. With this amount of people, this is the best way. If anyone gets criticized, as this night is over of how this is run, it is not the candidates or the students. This falls on Mr. McGrew, the high school honors government teacher. My students love him. Thank you once again for being a part of this evening, so let us begin. Our first student, we'll introduce Mr. Joe Lacrede.
Hello, my name is James Satirianos. I'm in the 10th grade and I attend the Keysport Area High School. I'm introducing Mr. Joe Lacrede. Mr. Lacrede is a retired police officer from the city of McKeysport Police Department. He has lived in McKeysport his whole life and graduated from MAS-D in 1982. He's a father of six children, two daughters plus four sons, all graduating from MAS-D. Mr. Lacrede also has four grandchildren. His oldest is graduating from MAS-D, plus two others enrolled in MAS-D, with one soon to be enrolled. When he was a police officer, he brought the J.R. Program into MAS-D, and 26 years later, it's still going strong. Thank you to Mr. Lacrede for participating this evening.
Mr. Lacrede, you have two minutes for your opening statement, you have two minutes.
Yes. The reason I'm running for office is I've been involved with the school board now since my 16th year. I've put a lot of time and effort into it. I want to see the district keep moving forward. And over my 16 years, I think I've done a lot for the district. I've done a lot for the students, I've done a lot for the staff I support, our administrative team. 99% of the time. Nobody's perfect and, like I said, you know, the administrative team is put in place and they make recommendations to us and you're not going to agree on their recommendations at all times. What I hope to accomplish is to, again, keep the district moving forward, make sure we want everybody accountable, and also we have a very, very high budget. And we got to make sure we stay on track so that we don't spend more money than what we have. And also making the schools as safe as they can be. That's been a top priority of mine since day one, and it'll continue to be. And if I'm not elected to the school board, I will still be involved in the district. It's just who I am. Thank you.
The next candidate we'll introduce, Matthew Keller.
Our next candidate is Matthew Keller. He lives in White Oak and he and his wife Jennifer and three children Caleb and Haythader at Founders Hall, Jackson, a fourth grader at Francis and Flor, and Damian, who is two years older, who's two years old, will soon walk the halls of MAS-D. He is a 2006 graduate of McKeysport Area Scholarship and went to get his Bachelor of Arts from the University of Pittsburgh at Greensburg in 2022. As well, his and completed his current legal certificate from Duquesne University in 2015. He currently works as a legal assistant at Edgar Snyder and Associates for the last two years and prior to that, he was with the PA, Department of Labor and Industry, as a labor law investigator for six years. He helped with the McKeysport Boys Marstery Soccer Program, underhead coached Steve Pimakis, and also coached soccer at White Oak Athletics Association. In the community, he is a member of the White Oak Lions Club, the White Oak 75th Anniversary Committee, and a member of the Mary Mother God Parish.
I want to start by thanking MAEA and MESPA unions and all the teachers and students involved for us in this inaugural debate. I'm running for school board to bring a sense of direction back to the district with a student-first mentality. Having a good direction ensures that decisions we are making focus on what is best for every student in the district. This starts with providing support and the tools to our administration, teachers, and support staff so that they can continue to provide a top-notch education in the classroom. I want to establish consistency in upholding our district policies to bring back structure within the buildings. I want to ensure that all students are treated equally. I also want to reestablish to our administration and staff that we support them in the policies that they uphold every day. We as a district need to stand top of maintaining safe and secure buildings as this promotes a positive learning environment for teachers and students. I want to demand transparency in the district so that the parents, students, and the community are aware of what is going on. With eight years of working in the legal field, reviewing contracts and legal documents, auditing payroll records, and negotiating between two parties, I believe my input is valuable to the board because I can help provide insight and understanding to issues that the board faces every day in hopes it helps us make the best decision for the district. With a student-first mentality, if elected, I will work with my fellow board members by listening and communicating with each one of them because we all have valuable ideas. This will help continue to move the district in a direction so that our students can succeed now and into the future.
Next student we'll introduce, Mr. Mark Holtzman Senior.
Hi, I'm Caleb Mac and I'm 11th grader in Mr. McGrew's honors government class. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Mark Holtzman Senior. Mr. Holtzman was a graduate of McKeysport and Senior High School. He attended and graduated from CCAC with an associate's degree, summa cum laude, in criminal justice. He also graduated from Point Park University with a bachelor's and master's degree in criminal justice. He's retired Deputy Chief of Police for the city of McKeysport and Chief of Police of a former Township Police Department. His professional affiliations and certificates include being a member of Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletic Association, basketball officials, a former member Tri-State College Basketball Officials, and a former two-term member of the Keysport Area School Board. He also has numerous awards and commendations in law enforcement over 27 years. Mr. Mark Holtzman Senior is married to Teresa Pizac Holtzman. He has six children, five are professional educators, and one is a professional firefighter, all MAS-D graduates. He also has 14 grandchildren, ages 1 months to 18 years old. Thank you for participating, Mr. Holtzman.
First off, I would like to start by thanking everyone for having us all here this evening. I know it's a great idea to be able to bring out your ideas and to let people know exactly what you think and what you plan on doing. I'm running again for three reasons, and I'll make it easy. Accountability, transparency, and safety in the school. Accountability starts at the top. Starts at the top with the school, then the administrator, professional staff, and then everyone else all the way down to the students. All right? And there's no deviation from that. If we don't take a look at that in regards to the accountability and then all three tied together, down to the security issues that we're having now in the schools, it's a bad situation. No one should be in these schools without clearances. In fact, no one should be in these schools no matter what they're doing without clearances. And we've had a long review of that, I'm hoping they cleared that up. Transparency, that was a major issue with the board because of the fact if they don't even answer your question, then the meeting finished. And I promise you, I'll bring that back and answer your question. Not only that, I will be available. If you want to leave a message in the school district office, I'll return your call. And third of all, obviously, is the safety. You can't teach and you can't learn if you're not safe. Many times in these schools, these kids, this is their safe haven and where they eat, and we need to continue with that. And with my experience in law enforcement and in business, I will bring that back to the district. Thank you very much for having me, and you have a bunch of time.
I am Brianna McNamda and I am a part of Ms. Pachiba's advanced speech class and I am introducing Ms. Tiffany Wampler, also known as Ms. Tip. Her and her husband have three daughters, two of which are in the district. She also has two grandchildren that will be in her district, in her school district next school year. Ms. Wampler is involved in many organizations of the community, such as McKeysport Softball and McKeysport Little Packer Board. Thank you to Ms. Tiffany Wampler for being here tonight.
Our safety for children is most important, as far as their education as well. I plan to work with everybody in the organizations, communities, to bring all ideas and everything to our school and to the board to get an answer for everything.
I'm Trina Pastores, I'm in Mrs. Pachiba's advanced speech, and I'm happy to introduce Mrs. Diana Elias. She has been a business owner and operator of Dyess Cornerstone Diner for 18 years. She is a lifelong resident and a 1980 MAS-D graduate. Ms. Elias is married to a retired McKeysport police officer, E. Michael Elias, and has a son, Michael, who is a 2015 MAS-D graduate. She has also been two committees for personnel and finance. Thank you, Ms. Elias, for participating tonight.
I am seeking reelection so I can continue my work for the students, staff, and taxpayers. I'm hoping we can all work together to provide an education in a safe and healthy environment. One thing I really like to accomplish is as a board, we can start getting along. If we can't get along, we cannot serve ends properly. That's one major thing we need to do. I hope it starts today with this group here. Whoever gets on, we need to work together. We have no communication. It's not five board members, there's nine. Everybody should agree to work together, and I just hope that's what we can accomplish. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Keen Curda. I'm an 11th grade student in Mr. McGrew's honors class, and our next candidate is Mr. Tom Philody. He is a lifetime resident and also a graduate at MAS-D. He's a disabled veteran who owned and operated three businesses in McKeysport. He installed commercial signs, lettered office windows and vehicles, and installed and repaired neon signs at Carl's Sign Company. Mr. Philody was a facility director at South Hellgany School Initiative for 10 years. As a director, he hired, trained, scheduled, and managed all custodial and maintenance personnel and worked directly with all teachers and administrative leads. He was also a school representative involved in the construction of a new elementary school. Mr. Philody is a retired, retired as toll collection manager on the Montfayet Expressway PA Town High Commission. He's also a former MAS-D school board director and then in 2021. Thank you, Mr. Tom Philody.
Thank you. The reason that I want to run for office is during my term, my first term, one thing I started was I made a motion to have air conditioning units put in classrooms and different places that we never had since I was a student. And I would like to follow up on that. I'd like to add to it and I'd like to find out exactly how that program went since I wasn't, my term ended before I could really do anything. Towards the end of my term, when I was made chairman of the building in Browns, I toured every school, I toured every building. I met with the principals, I met with the custodians and one of the teachers, and I asked them, you know, what do you need, what can we do? The custodial equipment, the maintenance ground, I mean, there are equipment in the garages. And I went back and made some modifications and what I found out is a lot of the maintenance equipment and a lot of the maintenance budget that is proposed every year, but rarely acted on. So at that time, they were getting some new custodial equipment. They got a new dump truck, and they got rid of a dump truck that sat in a garage for years, full of salt, it's never moved, and was unavailable to any of the maintenance crew. Now, I bring something over that you need to everybody else, any of the other candidates. As a facilities director, I did everything from changing bolts in the seats that you're sitting in to climbing air conditioning units on the roof.
Time, you have time.
I know what every maintenance, every custodial position does.
You have time. Time.
Hi, my name is Jayden Davis Keyes. I'm a student at the McKeysport Area High School. Our next candidate is Matthew Mose. He has multiple bachelor's degrees in education. He has spent the last 25 years as an educator with over two degrees as an employee in the Keysport Area School District. By McKeysport, he worked in multiple buildings, serving many capacities. He was an in-school suspension coordinator, teacher, counselor, principal, career and technical director, and unitary president. He has served as a member of council in the borough of Roseburg for over 10 years and volunteered in community outreach programs. In the last five years, he has the pleasure of having McKeysport's honor attendees as the voice of the taggers. The administration has chosen to provide the play-by-play called a sporting event to the radio. His diverse background will further the opportunity to learn quite a bit about the operations of the Keysport Area School District. He is currently employed as a head high school principal in an urban school setting with similar demographics to that of the Keysport Area School District. His daily work as an educator and council member focuses on issues that are essential to the skill set of a school board member, including school safety, physical management, educational decision-making, and community outreach. As a former employee, he has working relationships with personnel, has aided in development and procedures, and has familiarly with the school board policies to best streamline services for the Keysport Area school system. He grew up in Christie Park and he lived in the Keysport Area School District his whole life. His wife continues the commitment to the Keysport Area as operating room nurse at UCC McKeysport. He has family members that are students within the school district and like your family, want it only best for their students. As a graduate of the Keysport Area School District, he's aware of the rich position and pride one can have with the home of McKeysport. His work will be one to continue that tradition while restoring the pride. Always a tiger, always a tiger. I'd like to thank Ms. Pachiba, Mr. McGrew, Mr. Will, and most importantly, the students here this evening for their time and effort and preparation for this debate.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. That's Jayden Davis Keyes. Thank you, my man, you did awesome. And to the rest of the students for reading the biographies as well. My credentials were just shared and I'm proud of many of those things. In fact, the most tenured school board member on the social media is quoted as saying that he believes I'm the most, excuse me, he says that I'm the most qualified person to run for school board in the last 30 years. That may be arguable, but it's flattering nonetheless. But I think what's important to know is that those experiences provided me the opportunity to develop relationships. When I was a teacher, the students didn't care what letters came after my name until they recognized the relationships that we had. And that's what I'd like to build upon here as a school director. I have concerns about school safety, student achievement, truancy, transportation, and the financial stability of the district, including also employee retention and the concerns that you folks have with your families. As a certified counselor, I recognize the need for students' social, emotional needs in this post-COVID era. I will work to prioritize student needs along those lines and address the learning gap that COVID has placed upon us. The community and schools should work together in unison. My efforts will be to strengthen those bonds and restore severed ties. I will work to demand a whole school day for our students. Cannot be expected to compete when our instruction is abbreviated. In fact, we should be expanding upon that day with longer days and more pre-K opportunities as research suggests is best practice. as research suggests is best practices. As a regular attendee at school board meetings, I recently heard some disturbing practices that I'm not comfortable with regarding inconsistencies in student discipline. I will work to ensure that equity is followed in board policy, including discipline. I commend the administration in their efforts to prioritize professional development and diversity, equity, and inclusion. Those practices are a strong suit by the McIsport Area School District. Diversity should be one of our greatest assets. Lastly, I want to appeal to a voter who stands as director, meaning you have a voice. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Connor Bowman, and I'm a student at McIsport Area High School, and it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Davis Corvane. David grew up in Duquesne and graduated from Duquesne High School. His parents taught him the importance of being honest, hardworking, and respectful to others. They taught him how important character is in a person. They also instilled in him how important it is to get a good education, and how hard it is to lead, and how hard work leads to success. David lives in White Oak and is proud to live in the McIsport Area High School District. David graduated from Teal College with a degree in Business Administration. In nineteen eighty-six, David was hired for his first, for his first business manager job at Duquesne School District. In nineteen ninety, he was hired by the McIsport Area School District as the business manager. He worked at M.A.S.D. with his retirement in June twenty eighteen, except for about three and a half years at West Jefferson Hills. Davis worked, David worked in the, worked in total thirty-two years as a school district manager, with about twenty-five of those in M.A.S.D. The responsibilities were many, by all financial management aspects of running the school district. Preparing and overseeing the budget was a significant part of his job. After retiring, David started his own financial counseling business and provided financial management services to school districts. In addition to providing counseling services to M.A.S.D., he also worked in the Moon Chatter Valley and River View School Districts. He is currently provide, he currently is providing services to the White Oak School District. Thank you, Mrs. Capone, for being with us today.
Thank you. The first thing I wanted to do was recognize teachers today on Teacher Appreciation Day. Thank you so much for the profession that you chose, and for what you do every single day for the students. I also want to thank the sponsors of the debate, the N.E.A., the M.E.S.B.A., everyone involved, especially the students. I want to thank Governor Chris Christie for his debate preparation that he worked with me on. I'm running because I love this school district, and I'm appreciative of my time here, and I want to see us do even better. I want to help address some of the issues and obstacles we currently have in providing the best education to our students. I spent twenty-five years of my time as a business manager working in M.A.S.D., and that's because I liked and enjoyed working here. We have had our issues, and we continue to, but in my experience, ninety-eight percent of the days were good days. So I feel a sense of wanting to give back. I feel because of my experience here and the knowledge that I have on how school districts operate, I can offer a unique perspective to the board. I also have gone to board meetings, maybe unfortunately, for thirty-five years, so I kind of know how boards should operate, and how they should function. I feel I could bring professionalism to the board, a sense of humor which I'm sure we'll need at times, knowledge of things in general, or financial matters in particular. I'm trying to bring a sense of working together for the common purpose of providing the best environment we can, so that others feel the same way I did all those years about working. And I also want to strive to provide the best education and overall experience for our students. Having said that, I look forward to the debate. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jordan Rensman, I'm in the eleventh grade and in Mr. McGee's honor's class. I would like to introduce the big shot. Jason Pavlysy, also known as Big Sean, is a lifelong resident of White Oak and is a two thousand and thirty graduate of McIsport Area High School District. Jason is the oldest of three children, Charles and Laura Pavlysy, both M.A.S.D. graduates and lifelong residents of M.A.S.D. His siblings Mark Pavlysy and Ashley Cakey is also graduated from M.A.S.D. Mark is currently a music teacher in the state of Maryland, and Ashley works for New Gold Nutrition. Jason attended college and received an associate's degree in criminal justice. Jason currently works for U.B.M.C. in the corporate public safety department for the past fifteen years. Jason is actively involved in many of the school district activities and is an associate of both Boys and Girls Best School Center since graduating from Michigan. Jason has also become an official decision for the district and advocate for the student athletes to get their recognition recognition, selling school records, or reaching personal recognition. Jason believes in the group and has a passion for the district and the community service.
First, I would thank Mr. Rensman for his induction, and also shout out any teachers or retired teachers in the audience, as none of us would probably be in a situation or in this position now without, without those wonderful teachers. Good evening, I am Jason Pavlysy, also known as Sean, as Mr. Rensman stated. I'm running for school board, I'm sure we have safety, secure buildings, which encourages our quality learning. We need to be transparent with our community and how we're spending our tax dollars. Our teachers need support, and we need to ensure that everyone's being treated equally. Our schools must be safe from current learning. I have fifteen-plus years working in security hospitals, and I'm currently a part of Honeywell Security End user Group, which is a networking-based group within all disciplinary, it's nationwide, meets in and discusses current security concerns and how they can be solved. These network opportunities can afford us in helping us solidify the security of the district. Let's not sit here and try to reinvent the wheel, but let's all work together. Transparency can do, the community needs to understand how their tax dollars are being spent, and that we're spending them correctly, and there should not be any frivolous spending. Teacher support. We need to make sure that we're being competitive in wages for both teachers and support staff, and we are hiring those qualified individuals, not just somebody with connections. And equality, we need to ensure that students are being treated equally regardless of age, race, gender, politics, anything like that. As has been stated up here previously, I attended a school board meeting where I recently heard that things, that's not occurring, and political connections are allowing discipline to be relaxed, and I do not believe in that. You know, let's bring some fresh faces to this board with some fresh ideas. Basically, remember, safety, transparency, teacher support, and equality, that's what I'm looking to do. Thank you, everybody, for attending, and thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Nigel Jefferson, and I'm in ninth grade in Miss Pachiba's speech one class. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Jeffrey Anderson. Mr. Anderson is thirty-eight years old and was born and raised in McIsport. He has four children, two of whom currently attend the McIsport Area School District. Mr. Anderson is well-known in the community for the nonprofit. He runs the mentoring village and also helps the district kids create buddy benches. He is a registered Democrat. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for being here this evening.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, what was it, girl, today? Again, my name is Jeffrey Anderson, and I wanted to start off tonight by explaining to you all why I'm running for school board. I believe that the McIsport School District needs changes, both on the school board and inside our buildings. I feel like, I'm sorry, both inside our buildings and on the school board. I feel current members are failing our students, and I believe most of the members are failing our students. I think they're on our board for political gain, and to make a name for themselves. I care deeply about each other, and every student, and their success, and life, their safety, and their learning. And with myself on the school board, I believe I can bring that change. They need to help get the school district back on track, and help the children to embrace a successful future. I feel things I hope to accomplish. Number one is safety, coming up with new and better security measures to protect our students and staff. I want to help bring new ideas to our students' education. The McIsport School District is ranked below fifty percent in test scores, and that's in the state of Pennsylvania. We need to get those up, and they're below fifty percent in math, reading, and language. This needs and will be changed if I'm on the school board. Third, I think we should need to cut unnecessary spending, and look over the budgets again, and see what we can do to stop the unnecessary, unnecessary spending.
It's time, gentlemen. Candidates, as we begin the questioning portion, Ms. Reynolds here in the orange shirt will raise her hand. There is a timer on the board that will come up behind you, I know that it is behind you, so that will become a difficult thing. Ms. Reynolds will raise her hand when you have ten seconds left for your one minute response. Ms. Pachiba will even announce which numbers will be answering the questions again, your number one through ten, from our left to our right, to your right to your left. Let's begin.
Our first question will be answered by candidates numbers ten, four, and five, that's Anderson, Wompler, and Elias.
As a school board member, will you be visible in the schools to see the day-to-day procedure at times? Why or why not?
Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, I think it's very important to be visible in schools, to hear the students' concern, the staff's concern. So yes, I think it's very important to be visible in schools, and I plan to do so. So I would definitely be in the buildings, learning and hearing all the concerns, and anything I could do to help change those.
Thank you. Ms. Wompler.
Yes, absolutely, I'm all in with being in this school to make your members, you have done so well, and have a good education with the kids, so I feel that.
Thank you, we're still working on the closure. And finally, Ms. Elias.
I cannot be there every day, day-to-day, but I do reach out, people reach to me, I check, I send it, I follow up on everything, I show for events on a day-to-day operation. I don't think it's our, as a board member, our position to be doing that. Thank you.
Are there any responses by any other members? You can move on to question two. Question two will be answered by candidates numbers nine, two, and one, that's Pavlysy, Keller, and LoFettio.
Students have voiced their desires for more extracurricular offerings. Currently, no teachers are compensated for any extracurricular activities. How do you propose providing a richer experience for students?
Mr. Pavlysy.
Well, yeah, it's going to start with being able to fund, fund the extracurricular activities and the stipends for the teachers to be able to run them. I believe we're currently in contract negotiations with our teachers unions and stuff like that, so that's something to be brought up at those times. You know, I do, I have heard from the community that a lot of this stuff has been cut, and a lot of students don't have things to do, and they would like these clubs and stuff to come back, and I will do whatever I can to get those in there, but we need to make sure that the stipends that the teachers are receiving, the honor of these clubs, are being paid for, or, you know, competitively, or which is being competitive to what the market rate is going for, and other issues. Thank you.
My next response comes from Mr. Keller.
Yes, obviously, you'd have to review the budget and make sure that we have capabilities of providing compensation, but also that it is imperative that extracurricular activities are provided by students, because their involvement and the ability to give resources to promote education, to find ways to express themselves outside of the school is a top priority, but obviously, the budgetary issues, you want to make sure that you're not, that we aren't providing a fair conversation to these teachers.
And finally, Mr. LoFettio.
Okay, yes, the extracurricular offerings, you know, we have a lot of sports going on, we have non-sporting things going on, you know, whether it's plays, whether it's musical, things like that. Budgetary issues are a big thing, and the extracurricular pay is contractual through the contracts, and on top of that, I'll just say one thing for the coaches and everything else out there, that one of our retired school board members, Coach Ivan Hampton, said, if you're doing it for the money, then you're in it for the wrong reasons, because, he said, you'd be like to like a dollar, a dollar act, he was really in it. Thank you. Sorry, man.
Any rebuttals from the candidates? Ms. Elias, then Mr. Moles, then Mr. Seropian.
I have, for Mr. Anderson, I'd like to know what program does, does contribute for the students, because I don't know how ever supporting them. Oh, I'm sorry, Jason Pavlysy. Yeah, I'm.
This doesn't count against any of my rebuttals? Yeah, so, I mean, I'm not saying it happened while you've been currently on the board, but the members of the community have expressed that extracurricular, not extracurricular activities within sports have been cut, but clubs have gone down since, over the course of the last, last few years, they're, they're no longer here. This is, this was by no means a blame to any current board members, this is just through, I guess, natural process of this tradition, that we're not, we're not keeping these clubs, and maybe that's the reason, because the stipends are not being, the stipends aren't really large enough for the teachers to want to do.
Okay. Mr. Moles, you have a rebuttal?
Yes, I have experience in adding extracurriculars as a former union president, and I think Director LoFettio's right, it's not a one-for-one time you put in, but I think what's important here is about the students. We need to meet the students at where they are. Candid, open, Mr. Charles speaking with regard to helping the kids meet and educate the whole student, that's important. It's not all just about academia, and you were talking about the, the struggles that we have there, but many of the students are here for those arts, and I think adding extracurriculars is extremely important.
Finally, for our rebuttal, we have Mr. Seropian.
First of all, I confess that I was not aware that teachers didn't get paid for extracurricular activities. If that's true, that's not, that's not right, we not support that. The reason, the reason I feel that way is because extracurricular activities are just something that is so important for our students, and I think Mr. LoFettio, through Mr. Hampton and his best, were generous in the dollar act, it's probably more than a quarter an hour, so it's not for the money, it's because they love the kids.
Any further rebuttals? And for our third question, will be answered by candidates numbers four, eight, and six, that's Wompler, Seropian, and Filotti.
What is your opinion on the purpose and effectiveness of our district alternative programs such as the online program and Easton Academy?
That is Ms. Wompler.
Well, the online program, I think that we need to have where the students come up on and talk to teachers, instead of just the uploading of assignments. And as far as Easton Academy, as long as it is going to help our students get back into regular school, that's what we need to do, is get all of our students back into order.
Thank you. Mr. Seropian.
As the business manager, when both of these programs were created, I feel they're both very effective, they're cost-effective, in a cost-effective way of providing online education to students as an alternative to charter schools, so it saves the district money by keeping those students in-house, and same goes through for the alternative education. And same goes through for the alternative education programs. There are certain students that need placed in those programs, and if we didn't have them, we would have to send them elsewhere into programs that are much more costly. So both of these programs are important, they're effective, and I think we should definitely keep supporting them.
Thank you, Mr. Seropian. Any rebuttals from the panel? Oh, sorry, my fault. Mr. Anderson. Or no, it's Mr. Filoey, listen to Mr. Filoey.
These programs serve a purpose, they're there for a reason, and as long as they're properly monitored and cost-effective, they shouldn't even be up for debate. They should be kept in the district and well monitored.
And now do we have any rebuttals? Mr. Anderson.
I think the online was perfect when we needed it in order to pandemic and so forth. I believe that the students seem to be having one-on-one sessions with these teachers in school. I believe that might be why the test scores are down, because they're not getting that one-on-one interaction with the teachers. So I don't agree with keeping it unless we really need it, but I don't believe that we really need it at this time.
Any further rebuttals? Mr. Seropian.
This has to rebut that a little bit, because the online program was something that was created way before the pandemic. It was for students who were seeking an alternative way of getting educated. So instead of going to a charter school or a separate charter school, they got their education in Keystone. The online programs that were offered during the pandemic are a completely different thing.
Our fourth question will be answered by candidates numbers 3, 8, and 5. That's Holtzman, Seropian, and Elias.
What three things do you look for in hiring new teachers?
Mr. Holtzman.
Three things that you look for in hiring anyone. Number one is they've got to be able to communicate education to students. Number two, they have to be accountable for what they're teaching and how they're doing. And another one is very, very important, you've got to keep, you've got to keep these kids occupied, you've got to keep them engaged. So you need someone that's engaging and that's able to bring out the skills that these students have. We have a very diversified group of students in the Keystone Area School District from five different areas, and we definitely need to engage them. And to engage them, you've got to bring someone that's well-rounded, and that's exactly what we would do.
That's the middle candidate. Mr. Seropian.
Well, three things I would say. First of all, academically, they've been successful. They didn't have to be valedictorian. Who's a lot like Mr. Holtzman, but they just had to be a good student, I believe, at school. I think you have to get a sense from those people that they would be invested in our school district to the point where they would want to stay here, they would be committed to the school district. And I think we would need to look for diversity in our hiring, so that we hire males, females, black, white, and have a staff that reflects our students to the population.
And Ms. Elias.
I believe the three things we need is, sorry, communication with our students, the way they interact with them, to be dedicated to them, and accountability. Thank you.
Any rebuttals from the candidates? Mr. Loqueto.
I think what we're really running into right now is we're not getting enough teachers graduating college. And it's not just our district, it's every district out there. And that's what it is, when you get a qualified teacher comes along, we get them, we have them here, then all of a sudden, another job is open, and they go out and they leave us and leave our kids hanging. I completely understand when he's topped all our hair.
Our next question will be answered by candidates 7, 9, and 6. That's Moles, Pavlysek, and Filoey.
We are very clearly understaffed to service the very number of special education students in this district. How do you plan on?
Okay.
We are very clearly understaffed to service the very number of special education students in this district. How do you plan on adjusting that?
Mr. Moles.
The special ed population in the Keystone and School District is overwhelming. The school funding formula provided for special education does not nearly meet the needs of what it takes to educate the student. The school must find unique ways to look into the budget, to find means to provide for those students. We can't leave the students hanging. First place blow perhaps might be their charter school tuition base. It's going to be $14 million this coming year, and those are students that are leaving our school, and we could use that resources to better educate students, special ed, or all students. I think that finding unique ways to look at the assets that we have and repurposing them in the interest of special education is paramount.
Mr. Pavlysek.
I mean, it goes back to the budget and trying to find the ability to compensate the teachers and the support from the professionals that are dealing with special education. We need to find the appropriate funding to be able to do that and have competitive wages against other districts. It seems like Mark is very competitive right now, and if we're not able to meet that competitiveness, then we're going to lose these people, which is causing understaffed. And it's not probably just the Keystone School District, it's all school districts. Thank you.
Mr. Filoey.
Like you said, it's a problem in every school district, not just all. And figure minds in mind, have not been able to figure out how to fund it and how to control it. So my thought is it should be sent back to the state or the federal government to subsidize the schools just for these programs.
Any rebuttals from the panel? The next question will be answered by candidates numbers 3, 7, and 5. That's Holtzman, Moles, and Elias.
What will the school board do to increase the available tax base for your district?
Mr. Holtzman.
What will the school board do? Well, what's the magic word they always say is raise taxes? That's what they say, right? And I do not support raising taxes. So I'll tell you that right now, we have aging population here, senior citizens of fixed income, we have lower-income people here, and I do not see doing that whatsoever. What would I do to increase the tax base? I go back to one word again, accountability. We've got to start with accountability from the top to the bottom, and transparency with the client asking within this district, and let the public know where it's being spent, how it's being spent, and let's shift some of that money from a line item into another line item, such as within a special ed situation. I think the support staff in special ed are underpaid personally, and we need to do something about that. So in order to deal with those tax bases, we need to go through it, and if there's anywhere that needs to be adjusted, I did not say cut, I said adjusted, that's what should be done in order to increase the payment.
And Mr. Moles.
I will agree with Director Holtzman to an extent. I think raising taxes is a difficult question to talk about, especially with those of you, I suspect, are the folks who are paying timely. But there are folks who are not, right? So the school district pays quite a deal of money for collections through Keystone, and we need to hold those folks accountable, so that everyone's paying their fair share in an effort to provide programming for students. It is difficult to raise taxes, but when you have that discussion, you have to keep in mind that some folks aren't paying at all, and that's not acceptable.
Ms. Elias.
I think we need to make a positive environment. We've got to work, all of us have to get together and work and make people want to come to our community, want to come to our school district. That's a problem. We need people moving in the area and coming to this district. Thank you.
Any further rebuttals from the panel? Mr. Loqueto.
I want to touch on tax base also. And like Mr. Moles said, $14 million this kind of year for charter schools. I'm sorry, I think the Keystone Area School District is a quality learning education. The staff we have, I put top of everybody, and if we didn't have to pay this $14 million, we would have so much more money in our district. And we don't only have one charter school in our district, we have ten. Think about that.
Our next question will be answered by candidates numbers 8, 2, and 9. That is Seropian, Keller, and Pavlysek.
What are you intended to provide with open shortages?
Mr. Seropian.
This is a tough one. I hate to be critical, but I think the busking situation has been mishandled. The previous bus contractor is having difficulty, and every bus contractor probably across the country at that time because of the pandemic, where its experience of shortage of bus drivers. So I think we needed to sit down, come up with some creative solutions on how to make buses more efficient, so that we needed less runs, and probably needed to be bus drivers more to try to encourage more people to go into driving a bus and get people certified, have a CDL license, et cetera. That's how we would have done it.
Thank you. Mr. Keller.
I think we need to sit down and communicate with bus company to hold them accountable, to meet our needs as a district. I understand that it's not enough of the previous board, but I think that these companies are providing a service to us, and we need to hold them accountable and help them address any issues that we can. Thank you.
And Mr. Pavlysek.
It's a national shortage with bus drivers, that's an unknown fact. We eliminated the previous bus company and terminated their contract because we don't, they weren't able to provide service. And this is the same service that this bus company is not being able to provide to us, and we're not holding them accountable like we held the previous bus companies. We need to hold accountability with the bus company, we need to go back to them, we need to find out, you know, we just take in the lowest bid, this looks good on paper, we're probably now paying double because we somehow missed the ability to be charged for fuel, but now all of a sudden, that's got thrown out there as well. To address the shortage, we need to come up with creative solutions, reevaluate the routes, and see what we can do as a team, as a partner with the district and the bus company, and even if we need to, you know, the city or something like that, to look for other ways to get these students here. The students need to be in school. Thank you.
Any rebuttals from the panel? Okay, Mr. Loqueto, Mr. Holtzman is next down there, Mr. Moles, oh, Ms. Wompler, then Mr. Moles, and now we're.
Okay, as far as the bus driver shortage, the bus shortage, we do have a tough time getting by buses. But again, we had a contract with the current bus company, and they changed the wording and it cost the district some more money on top of that for fuel, which I was totally against, and I felt we shouldn't screw our ground on that. We're talking about holding, I'll take my extra 30 seconds then. We talked about holding our company accountable, and when it come time for the bus or the gas fuel surcharge, it was like, you know, okay, we're going to give in, and it was an eight-to-one vote. I'm the one that voted no, because, I'm sorry, we had a contract that's way should have been this.
Mr. Loqueto, you have used all your 30 seconds. Take it. That was your last.
And you used two.
Useful. Okay, you still have questions to be answered, but you've lost your rebuttal.
Uh, Mr. Holtzman, I believe you're next.
Yeah, very simple, accountability, again, very simple. We have a bus contractor that was just signed, it was not looked at well enough, it was not reviewed through the solicitor's office, it was signed, and then all of a sudden, we had a gas problem. I think what you need to do very simply is review with that bus company, and you have to go to an outside source to get other buses in here. That's what we need to do, but it needs to be reviewed and overall.
Ms. Wompler.
We also need to have accountability for the way the students are behaving on the buses. A lot of the bus drivers are complaining about how our children are behaving on the buses, and a lot of them have quit driving buses because of that. So our students need to be held accountable, as well as our school, for the bus drivers.
And Mr. Moles.
Thank you to Mr. Regu, for concluding that not all the candidates were participating. Early on, I thought they were coming in busway two. Ladies and gentlemen, our kids not coming to school on time is unacceptable. They're taking standardized tests this week, the teachers are being held accountable for those test scores, and they don't have a level playing field. This should be a number-one priority. Kids need to be in school, we must find a way for our kids to have a whole day of school.
Thank you. Any further rebuttals? Our next question will be answered by candidates numbers 1, 6, and 4. That's Loqueto, Filoey, and Wompler.
What is your opinion on nepotism in hiring practices?
That is a good question. If, if somebody's qualified for a position, I don't see a problem hiring. That's bottom line.
And Mr. Filoey.
Nepotism has always been one of my P's, especially in school districts and public cities. Nepotism is okay if the candidate, if the person is qualified, and they start where any other person started without an immediate raise. So in some cases, they applied for jobs and didn't even know what they were applying for, because they thought it was a one deal. In the whole, I'm a guy.
And Ms. Wompler.
They have to have qualifications.
And it does seem, we're only halfway through the questions, so I just want to point out that we've not heard a lot of witnesses from everybody yet. It is totally randomized, so just, we're getting there. Our next question, bottom, sorry. Yes, Ms. Filoey.
Yeah, very simple, nepotism means you're not qualified, that's the bottom line. Very, very simple, best available candidate, especially if they're homegrown, we've got the best available candidate to stay here. We have just lost about seven people here recently in administration, and Act 93 people that were homegrown and put their time and effort into here and understand the statement, so nepotism, no. Best available, qualified, yes, thank you.
Any further rebuttals? Our next question will be answered by candidates 7, 10, and 3. That's Moles, Anderson, and Holtzman.
Currently, we have around 60 to 70% of seniors leaving school early every day with a partial schedule. High school students must complete four years of English, three years of science, social studies, and math. Do you think we should increase graduation requirements, reinstitute the job force program, increase their core class requirements, or something else entirely?
Uh, Mr. Moles.
I recently had the same question in my role as a high school principal, and they went the other way. They had four requirements for each, and they've reduced it. And I offered the experience I have here in Keystone as a principal, and this pattern of students leaving early. While it is an incentive for some veteran seniors, 17-year-olds, 18-year-olds to have that opportunity to start their life's work, I think it provides the freedom for students to not do so, right? Now, there are plenty of seniors who are here all day and taking advantage of their college preparatory coursework. I think allowing the students the individuality and choice is important. If I ask the students in here, "I'm going to, you would like us to progress those requirements and make you stay all day?" I hand. One down there, the teacher, right? So I think it's important that we build the student voice involved here as well. And I don't, I don't.
That's due time, Mr. Moles. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, I don't believe that the students should be staying in school all day either. I think if they have enough credits and enough requirements. I think if they have enough credits and enough requirements to leave early, I believe they should be able to have that opportunity. That's something that they look forward to when they become a senior. If they don't have enough requirements or credits to have that opportunity, then I think that we need to evaluate the graduation requirements or bring in job corps or something other than that to help these students get on track to where they need to be.
Any rebuttals from the panel? Then we'll move on. Our next question will be answered by candidates.
I think I was supposed to answer that question.
Oh, I'm so sorry, did I jump over already? That was like seven, Anderson, and I'm sorry, Mr. Holtzman, I apologize.
That's okay, that's fine. I have to look at that today. As far as graduate requirements, I don't have any problem with that. And I don't have any problem with the, if a student has, has created these requirements or she, her, her requirements and are leaving school to go to work or whatever they're doing, that's fine. There's no sense in keeping them in school if you don't have something for them to do. I don't mind causing problems, you know, so I don't have any problem with that. I know way back, we went to work, we went, I went to work, many students do. And those that have completed early, those are pretty darn good students. And that's why they have, they have completed their requirements early. So I don't think they should be penalized by giving them extra work or anything else to do. Let them move on out there, hopefully monitor them and see what they're, what they're doing regardless of education or academics or sport, uh, job market, thank you.
Any rebuttals now? Now we'll move on to the next question. Our candidates will be five, one, and two. That's Elias, Lopretto, and Keller.
I agree with dress code.
What are your thoughts on dress code in its current state? Do you see room for revision?
Okay, my son graduated in two thousand fifteen. When the dress code came out, I was like, oh, no. But to be honest with you, once I seen how the students looked, how they, they looked united, like a group. They fit in. I loved it. I loved the dress code. It was much easier. Thank you.
Mr. Lopretto?
Yes, I was, I was on the board when the dress code came into play and I commended the students that joined the panel and brought everything to the school board on what they wanted to do and everything. And as far as revising it, I would say leave it the way it is. I think our students, you know, are very professional coming to school, you know, with the colored shirts and pants and everything. I just think that it's a good look for our district and nobody can complain. Somebody has something better to say. So yeah, I'm all for the dress code to stay the way it is. If there's any revisions, then let it be made by the students brought to the board.
And Mr. Keller?
I think the dress code should stay in its current state. I'm agreeing with I and Mr. Lopretto over here. I think it makes the school districts unified and the kids look professional, clean. And it removes any stigmatism that they may pass on each other for the clothes that they may be wearing.
Any rebuttals from the panel? Mr. Moles?
I worked here since the inception of the dress code until a few months ago. In my new school, when I tell them that I worked in Keithport and they have the dress code, it's all, there was some problems. And they said, well, a student said to me, this is really telling. They said, well, no wonder there's so many problems. The students can't even wear what they want. They've already come to school aggravated. I would be open to hearing smart revisions to the dress code.
Any rebuttal? Yeah, another rebuttal, Mr. Holtzman?
Yes, there are no questions. The dress code should be in place. I do believe though, it's been in place that long, that there should be an opportunity to see if it can be revised within reason. And of course, I think there should be a committee put together between the school district, the school board, the administration, the students, and the teachers. And see what can be done, if there's something can be changed. And I'm totally, totally for a dress code and for any revision, that would be decent.
At the halfway point, just to give you an update, Mr. Holtzman, you have one rebuttal left. Mr. Moles, you have one rebuttal left. Mr. Lopretto, you are out of rebuttals. Did I buy it? So we did discuss it. There are some that have, have no rebuttals. If someone does run out of rebuttals in the last ten questions and you want to yield one to somebody who wants to rebut, you are welcome to do that. You are not required to do that. Also, the Pirates are tied against Tampa Bay right now.
Here we go, the second half.
Due to the educator shortage, teachers are in.
Uh, this question will be answered by candidates numbers ten, four, and three. That's Anderson, Wompler, and Holtzman.
Due to the educator shortage, teachers are in high demand across the country. How do you plan to incentivize teachers to work instead?
Mr. Anderson?
All right, I'm still turning. I'm not, I'm not quite sure I understand the question. So there is a shortage on teachers in the country. Okay, I mean, obviously.
We started for time over again.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, seriously, we started.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Obviously, there is a shortage on teachers in the country. I believe it's the best candidate to get the job. I believe teachers' pay should be equal all around. And I believe if we set that in place and I think it would be, open opportunities for other teachers that would want to apply for this position in this school district. But I don't think we're competitive compared to other school districts with the wages for teachers. I mean, they're hardworking teachers and they deserve competitive wages. So I think by changing that and renegotiating their contracts, I think we'd be all right with teachers and getting them in here.
Ms. Wompler?
We need to look at the budget and give our teachers the wage that they deserve and to give them incentives to stay in our school district. We have lost too many good teachers over funding, which I'm sure at some point you can find in the budget to give to our teachers.
Mr. Holtzman?
I think what we need to do to keep teachers here, we need to give them a good work environment. We need to support them above and beyond what they do in the classroom and outside the classroom. As far as financial incentives, that of course has to be done through the union and through their contractors. And I don't have a problem if that is something can be done in regards to that to keep them here. We've lost many good ones out of this district and we didn't lose them because of a shortage. We've lost teachers, we've lost administrators because of political factors in this community. We need to eliminate that and let teachers be teachers, students be students, and administrators be administrators. Thank you.
Any rebuttals from the panel? Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Lopretto has borrowed every bottle.
There we go, thank you. I just want to say, we got a lot of wonderful students in this school district. And if we can get some of our seniors right now to go to college and get a teaching education and then in four years, you can come back here and work, I think that'd be the greatest thing that would ever happen in Keithport Area School District.
Any further rebuttals? Moving on, our next question will be answered by candidates numbers eight, ten, and two. That's Seropian, Anderson, and Keller.
What is an optimum class size and why?
Mr. Seropian?
Well, the optimum class size varies depending on the education level. The elementary grades should be kept as low as possible, preferably below twenty. And at the high school, it's important to also have lower class sizes. And there's no, there's no question that the less students in a class, the more attention they get and the more the teacher is able to customize lessons and so forth. So class size is very important, particularly in the early elementary grades and throughout, throughout even the high school courses.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I really, in the understanding of them taking a first grade class away at one of our schools because the class size was too small. That class right there, their, their test scores are outstanding because of the class size. So I think having less in the class helps the students learn more, gives them more one-on-one interaction with the teachers. It helps them, you know, better educate them. So I'm all for smaller class sizes. I would suggest maybe like fifteen in the class. I think that's appropriate size for a class for them to get the appropriate learning.
And Mr. Keller?
Yes, reduce class size would obviously allow for more one-to-one teacher-to-student instruction, which would hopefully inhibit academic success in the classroom. I understand that obviously the Bush Terry reasonings, you have to address certain things, but hopefully maintaining a smaller class size would promote academic success in the district.
Any further comment from the panel? Moving on. Our next question will be answered by candidates numbers seven, four, and five. That's Mr. Moles, Ms. Wompler, and Ms. Elias.
Should districts, should districts? Yeah, precincts, I actually thought I heard so far and I couldn't get it right. Should districts precincts be easily represented on the board? Preventing to many people from the same neighborhood, preventing many people from the same neighborhood or household to hold decision-making positions? Explain. Would you be in favor or opposed to the following breakdown in the board members? South for sales, one representative. For sales, one representative. Drabosburg, one representative. White Oak, two representatives. The Keithport, three representatives. And Valharts, one representative.
Absolutely, without doubt. The different communities have different, meant different needs. Although we all make up Keithport Area School District, there are many factors that each one of those communities represents. Drabosburg was the last community to get school busing and you've heard how agreeable those relationships are with the bus companies. So as a representative from the Drabosburg community, I think it's essential that Drabosburg have a voice at the school board table. And there's other, other representatives as well. They have unique perspectives. A special shout out to the White Oak folks. You've provided a lot in your tax base for me and my family. So you certainly should have representatives there. It's essential to have representation from each part of those. The school district is comfortable taking the tax base from each one of those municipal bodies. And as a former history teacher, I'm familiar with this slogan that said, "No taxation without representation."
Ms. Wompler?
Absolutely, everybody should have a voice from their community on the board to make sure that every child in that area is getting treated fairly from all districts in the school district.
And Ms. Elias?
I agree. I agree absolutely. We should support everyone.
Any further comments and rebuttals? Mr. Philodi?
Aren't these people, don't they have the opportunity to run for a school board from these districts?
Yes, they do. That's why I'm here.
I don't know. I didn't know there was a restriction on the need for any of these places to run.
Uh, Mr. Holtzman, did you?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Holtzman and then Mr. Pavlysek.
Okay, I want to use my last thirty, I guess. I've been in favor of this for years, years and years. The problem is the population level. White Oak provides fifty-two percent of taxes to the schools. Okay, I think the breakdown of that is pretty darn good up there. The problem has always been the same. The Keithport's had much more representation anyway. We need to do that. I do not know the proper guidelines to do it, but I would be more than happy to spear it and do that. I think representation is due. Thank you.
And Mr. Pavlysek?
We don't, yeah, I mean, we need to have a breakdown here. And to answer Mr. Philodi, yeah, everybody has the opportunity to run. But I think what the question is saying is that there would be one guaranteed representative for the amount of representatives from each one of these communities. It's, yeah, if you could be a resident and run, fine, but you may not be elected, but you could get there based off them requiring to have one representative.
Any further rebuttals from the panel? Moving on. Our next question will be answered by candidates numbers two, ten, and eight. That is Keller, Anderson, and Seropian. All right, I hear, I'm gonna read it, nevermind. Today, more than ever, and particularly in our community, students struggle with finding time or support to complete work outside of school. What are your thoughts on a district-wide homework policy? And that is Mr. Keller.
I mean, I think that puts a lot of stress on our educators to get a lot of work done inside of the classroom. I understand that a lot of kids are disengaged activities, athletics, maybe working after school. I understand that. But also, we need to be educating our students to take initiative to learn at home and take what they were taught in the classroom and apply to, to their knowledge. And so I think that I would not be opposed to hearing the suggestions of it, but I would not also put the stress on the teachers to cram work in a shortened class period as it is.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, there's, obviously, there's a lot of after-school programs. They can stay after school to get the help with their homework. But also, I think giving, giving them more time in school to do the work that they need to be done. My understanding, they're, they got about two hours, two and a half hours a day of free time. Not necessarily free time, but not academically. They're not learning for like two and a half hours of their day in school. I believe giving them the extra time at school, taking away some of that free time, gives them a little bit more opportunity to work.
And Mr. Seropian?
I believe the homework serves a purpose, but I think too much of it is not good. So I think there should be some policy or some way to limit the amount of homework given to students so that they can enjoy their, being a kid or not having to go through hours and hours worth of work.
Any rebuttals from the panel? Next question will be directed at candidates numbers nine, six, and one. That's Pavlysek, Philodi, and Lopretto.
What does DEI mean to you and what should that look like in our school?
Mr. Pavlysek?
Yeah, diversity, equity, and inclusion. You know, we need to ensure that our students' academic needs are being met, especially in our educational areas, where they have the support that they need. We need to make sure we have relevant training for staff, to be able to accomplish this. Everybody should be treated equally. You know, I think that we as, as just individuals need to have self-reflection on biases and stereotypes to ensure that we're not excluding anybody, we are including everybody. And I also feel that the students and the staff need to be, need to have some say in some of the decision-making of the things that are going on in the district that are directly affecting them all the time. And, you know, we need to equally enforce our policies. If it's good for one, it's good for the other. We can't be, you know, showing favoritism towards anybody for any specific reason. Thank you.
Mr. Philodi?
I agree. I agree with what he said. That the policies that we have in effect right now are only as good as the people that are enforcing them. And it seems to be going all over the place with no, I don't know that, I'm not there every day and I don't see what's going on. It's been two years since I've been in this. What I hear is things are all, it's all over the place. So I don't know the answer. I don't know, you know, how to remedy it, but I think it deserves a better looking into by the disboard and the new board companies and maybe a new policy could be set up.
Mr. Lopretto?
Yes, I agree with this to what some was saying over there. And I really think everybody, you know, it's a new day and time. Everybody has to be treated equally. I mean, you can't, you can't do for one, you know, the board itself right now has been working on a lot of this. And hopefully we can just keep moving forward and make it a. working on a lot of this, and hopefully we can just keep moving forward and make a policy of maybe in schools and, you know, make it feel that way.
Any rebuttals or responses from the panel? Okay, moving on. Our next question will be answered by candidates numbers seven, four, and two. That's Moles, Wampler, and Keller.
What do you think are effective daily safety procedures for entering into the building? Currently, what do the schools do that is or is not working?
I think the Keithport School District's safety policy is very encompassing. They're familiar with the practice of the teachers and guess what's a new security team now? I guess arguable whether or not that was the best team or not, but the school board members had to do something because of the trouble that we had. What's most telling to me in the security team was Director Goginar, who's a law enforcement person. He was passionate about letting us know that there are going to now be fourteen security officers, and we only had as many as seven. What was most disturbing to me was, why? What's happened? Why overnight do we need to double the security firm in the Keithport Area School District? I'm glad we did, because I was hearing tons of problems. But it's interesting to me that the snippet in the news was we're doubling the security, and I hope the school board members were pushing back toward administration to find out why.
That's your time, Mr. Moles. Uh, Ms. Wampler?
I think that us doing proactive stuff is better than doing proactive stuff. Yeah, I like the fact that, you know, they check the children's bags, they do not, you know, try to turn this or anything like that, so we don't have to worry about anything being brought in with the security checking on of their bags and stuff.
And Mr. Keller?
I think if the security company is maintaining checking bags against students as they enter the building, also any visitors, we maintain that stance. In regards to any daily safety procedures, I know that obviously with an increased security that we would require them to make sure that students are getting where they need to and not making, and not stressing our teachers to enforce policies or worrying about what is going on in the hallways so they can prepare for the class within, for that period.
Any rebuttals or comments from the panel? Mr. Pavlysek?
Yeah, yes, first of all, as far as the entrance policy goes, we need to have security professionals doing the security work, not the teachers. I'm not going to go teach a social studies class, and so a teacher should not have to go and search somebody's bag, they may not be properly trained what they're looking for. Second of all, there's multiple new technologies out there that can ease the burden of that with different weapon detection systems and stuff like that. And also, you know, there's so many entry systems in this building that, you know, people walk in here, doors are locked.
That's your time, Mr. Pavlysek. Next question, any further responses? Next question will be answered by candidates numbers one, three, and nine. That is Lopredo, Holtzman, and Pavlysek.
Teachers in this district are getting injured regularly and suffering long-term effects as a result of student behaviors. How do you propose to not only prevent these injuries, but to support teachers who have been injured and provide ongoing support?
Mr. Lopredo?
Okay, as far as teachers being injured regularly and suffering long-term effects, I don't really know of too many. I know of one, and I know we tried to do something for, but unfortunately because of the way things are, it couldn't work out for, and I mean, again, we have the security guards in the schools, you know, teachers are breaking up fights, and, you know, I don't want to say they're not going to get hurt, but when you get involved in something like that, chances are something will happen. I would just hope that, you know, nobody does get hurt and kids just gotta themselves accountable to things like this too. I mean, you see an adult coming in, stop what you're doing.
Mr. Holtzman?
Okay, I'm gonna go back to that magic word again, accountability. Very simple, you want to save these teachers, the teachers were getting hurt, the students were getting hurt, take the security that we have, and they have to be placed in strategic locations and they must be there, they should be held accountable for their time, whether they come late, leave early, and they should be held accountable for every hour of the day and where they are stationed within these schools. The administrators should station them where they need to be, whether it's cafeteria hallway, whatever, to curtail them. I know there's been fights, there's videos, there's pictures, it's insane. Plus, they need to have their... I'm clear as yet, the security guards will be there, and that's very, very important. We need to be more accountable to security, we have our police officers and do a great job, and our security, thank you.
Mr. Pavlysek?
Yeah, we need to make sure that these security officers and the police officers within the district are being trained properly. You know, teachers do need to try to de-escalate the situation, but I'm not sure it's a hundred percent their job to break up every fight that's going on. And I agree with Mr. Holtzman, these security officers need to be positioned around the buildings in more locations as opposed to just, you know, having one centralized or one location at the front of the building and then having to get to places to take longer response times. That's all I have.
Any rebuttals or further commentary? Okay. Mr. Lopredo has borrowed another.
Yeah, I just wanna, I agree with what Mr. Holtzman said about the security guards being placed throughout the schools, but I just wanted to really touch on the clearances. I was big on, they said, the clearances weren't here. I was tough on that issue, but as of today, we do have the clearances in the district.
Any further commentary?
Yeah, I would just like to see our security guards maybe trained more. I would like to see our security guards trained more, maybe they handle more to protect our teachers and our students.
Anyone else, any further comments? Uh, Mr. Filodi and Mr. Anderson. Mr. Filodi? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't have a minute.
Yeah, I just gave you...
Okay, Mr. Holtzman has borrowed a rebuttal, then Mr. Holtzman, and then Mr. Filodi, and then Mr. Anderson.
Okay, I'm gonna get back to the fact that we talked about clearances. There should have been no one in this building, there shouldn't be a teacher, there shouldn't be a janitor, there shouldn't be an administrator, there shouldn't be a police officer, there should be a security guard, we do not have clearances. As a P I double A official, we have to have clearances plus carry them with us or we can't get into the schools. If any administrator asks us that. There should have been no one in these buildings for a month as they were without those clearances. That's wrong, it should have been dismissed for it.
I think we should do a study of company, I think, in the, just how the cell phones in the school, how they're promoting these fights or enticing these fights. I don't know if anybody's ever looked into that, and that could be a major factor.
And Mr. Anderson?
I think we need the parents to also accountable for their child trajectory to the school. They come to school to learn, they don't come to school to fight or play around. I think proper training of the security officers here is definitely key, I think they need to have proper training. And then teachers should not be breaking up any fights. If they're here to teach, they should be in harm's way at any time. And that's when we need to have your security in the proper places at the right times to prevent this from happening. And the parents.
That's your time, Mr. Anderson. Okay. Our next question will be answered by candidates numbers eight, five, and six. That is Saropian, Elias, and Filodi.
Our libraries are a mess, our bathrooms are falling apart, and our grounds are littered. There are studies that show a strong correlation between the appearance of a building and success on the students. Are you willing to put aside funding specifically for beautification and upkeep of the facilities?
Mr. Saropian?
I'm not sure if this is a fun issue, or if it's the personal thing in that department is not making sure that people are doing their jobs properly. Maybe we're not staffed properly, I would have to look into this and identify why this has become an issue, because having retired just five years ago, I don't remember this being an issue five years ago, so I don't know what changed in those five years where facilities aren't maintained. I remember walking into buildings when they were like pretty steep, so I'm not sure quite what problems, but...
Ms. Elias? Absolutely. I think we should, we use Mr. Holtzman's word, accountability. Someone needs to be checking on these employees and making sure people feel reported back to us so they can be handled. Thank you.
Mr. Filodi?
I think it's a combination of all understaffed, under budgeted, lack of maybe proper equipment, but at the end of the day, they should never be in any position, there should never be a bathroom or any part of this building that's in a condition like they've described. There's no reason, it could be reported by a teacher or another custodian or a security guard, anybody could report it, or a student.
Any further commentary from the panel?
I would like to add something if I can, I don't know if I used them all up. I have one. We do have a committee that handles this, so I'm hoping that they can receive complaints and go around the building and check. We do have a buildings and grounds, we get a report every month, which is red, we never hear this. So maybe we need help from the teachers to staff communication.
Any further rebuttals? Mr. Saropian?
I just wanted to add, I have heard that there's a staff, there are some staffing issues, there's been some staff eliminated over the past few years. And especially in the maintenance department, I'm not sure if that affects the custodial department as well, but if you don't have enough people to maintain the facilities, that is definitely a reason to worry and to take a look at that immediately.
Any further rebuttals from the panel? Okay. Next to last question will be answered by the candidates numbers, uh, sorry, ten, seven, and one. That's Anderson, Pavlysek, and Lopredo.
Where do you stand on a district and/or school-wide, and/or school-wide, don't policy? Where do you stand on a district and/or school-wide don't policy?
Starting with Mr. Anderson.
I think it's all right that your cell phones in school, just as long as you're using them properly, especially nowadays with certain situations going on in school districts. Children need that communication with their parents if something would happen. So having that cell phone in school with them, I agree with one hundred percent, but I think there should be proper procedures in place for when those students walk into that classroom, when they should be allowed on their phone or when they should not be allowed on their phone. So I agree with that, regardless of school.
And our next was, uh, Mr. Moles, I apologize, it's past my turn.
It's okay. With the great technology that we have comes great responsibility. My experience is that some students, especially middle school age, are not prepared to handle that responsibility. It becomes a liability for the school district when students are being irresponsible with the phone. I think there could be some revisions within the school district's cell phone policy that would award good behavior and students who are able to manage it and use it as a resource. Some students cannot. It should not be a blanketed policy district-wide, but I think teachers would agree, in some cases it should be a useful tool, why wouldn't we? Everyone has it in their pocket right now. But in some cases, it's just not acceptable. I think smart discussions amongst the educators can determine whether or not cell phone use is accepted.
And Mr. Lopredo?
I believe our cell phone policy is already replaced in the district, and I don't believe that cell phones should be on students during the day. And I give Miss Lucy Brink a big shout out because I know at the middle school, we have some kind of a blocker up now so that they can't use their cell phones, and maybe we should do that in all, uh, district buildings.
Any rebuttals from the panel? Our last question will be answered by numbers six, nine, and three. That's Filodi, Pavlysek, and Holtzman.
Last year, the high school band won state championships. We have other award-winning programs which bring our district recognition. However, these programs are in need of funding and support. What new ways will you, as a member of the school board, foster music education and other elementary programs in order to continue to build on this success?
Mr. Filodi?
My experience in the district with the band was they were partially funded by the school. It seemed to me that the boosters, booster plugs earned a lot of money for uniforms, for transportation, different things that the bands needed. And I don't even see a band in some of these schools anymore. I'm not sure of the band here, I know it's not even close to the, I guess, the size it was years ago, but I think it should be, it used to be the band boosters did a lot of money, I don't know what it is now, but I think it should be a combination of those, because it is inexpensive.
Mr. Pavlysek?
Uh, yeah, yes, I agree wholeheartedly with it, the band needs funding. Both my brother and sister were in the band, and I know that there was a lot of fundraising that needed to be done for them to be able to get it. Congratulations to anybody that's here who's in the band and works, get champions this year. And they deserve school funding, just like the football program, the basketball program, the track and field program. You know, let's also look at the robotics team. I mean, I believe they had to go to Texas or something for a championship, and here they are with a GoFundMe page on Facebook trying to raise money. I'm not saying that we should, you know, we may not be able to fund them entirely, but the district needs to put some money towards some of these other extracurricular activities that are primarily booster-supported, but once again, that goes back to the budget, we need to get creative on how we can do that.
I think it's Mr. Holtzman.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to say this, I've said this for years, I've listened for years, the band works as hard as any sport we have in the school district or any other one. No way around that, you want it or not. The other thing is, now we're talking finances, we are in a diverse financial culture here within our district. Some folks have more than others, many don't have much at all. If you want suggestions, I'm just gonna throw it on top of my head, the P G, at every sporting event, every contest, we have, uh, we have concessions standing. So maybe diversify that and split some of the groups as far as winning the money, or also, also again, accountability, make sure the inventory is what it is, where it is, and so that we can maximize the money from making these concessions and from all the organizations, from athletics all the way down to the chessboard. Thank you very much.
Do we have any rebuttals? Mr. Moles?
I've been saving ones, I'm not...
This is it?
So, I agree, there are unique ways to find funding for these programs, like Mr. Pavlysek said, with your robotics. I think it takes a village, right? So it's pertaining to what Mr. Holtzman said, not everyone has the means to do so, so they had to go fund you, which I donated to. There needs to be a way to find the resources within the community so that we can find and meet the needs of each one of our students, band equally.
So as the candidates are given a couple of seconds to gather their thoughts for their closing statements, we will start backwards this time as opposed to the beginning with the introductions, one through ten. We will start ten through one, beginning with Mr. Anderson down to Mr. Lopredo. After the closing statements by the candidates, and you are allotted sixty seconds to your closing statement, after your closing statement, the audience, I will address you with some closing remarks. So, Mr. Anderson, if you're prepared, go ahead.
In closing, ladies and gentlemen, we won't get changed unless we vote differently. If we keep voting the same people in, we are going to get the same results. I promise you, if this gave me the opportunity to serve you on the school board and be a voice for us parents... us parents and for our children, for our children, we will get changed, and I will do everything in my power and will not stop until our children have the best test scores in the state and our buildings are the safest around. Our children deserve that from us. Don't vote just because you heard of a name last name, vote for who you're going to, vote for who's going to work the hardest for them and do what's in their best interest. On May 16th, look for my name on the ballot, Jeffrey Anderson, and note that you voted for the right candidate for you and your child. Thank you.
Mr. Pavlysek?
First of all, I would like to thank the MADA and NDASP for putting on this event. As we conclude this event, I'd like to emphasize actually the safety of our students and staffs is top priority to ensure a safe learning environment. We as a district need to remain transparent to our communities, we need to ensure that all our staff are supported to encourage quality learning environment. We need to eliminate, I'm saying it again, eliminate political favorism towards certain students that the current board has been to its occurrence. As we reflect on current happenings within the district over the last few years, I want to take a look at a few numbers. 24 years, 16 years, 16 years, 12 years, 8 years. What do those numbers mean? Those are the number of years that some of the current school directors have served on that board. Bill Clinton once said, "The price of doing the same old thing is far higher than the price of change." With that, I humbly ask you to vote Jason Pavlysek for school president. Thank you.
Mr. Serovian?
Once again, I want to thank the sponsors of the debate, and commend the students and the sponsors for a well-run debate, the public as well, it's probably the most attentive debate I've ever seen, I'd watch it on TV, I'm kind of a political junkie, sir. I also want to recognize other candidates, all the other candidates, who are all good people, trying to do good things for the schools and the community. This office doesn't pay, so no one is doing this for the money. I wish them all luck in the election. Me personally, I promise you, I never will be told by someone else how to vote. I'll listen to input from others, those from within the school district and outside, and then I'll make the best decision possible. I have no ulterior motives, no predetermined agendas, other than those of already stated earlier. I think because of my personality, being able to get along with others, treat everyone with respect, and...
That's your time, Mr. Serovian. Mr. Moles?
Thanks, everybody, kids, you got like 10 minutes to get to bed, like this is real tight, we gotta wrap this up. Thank you, everyone, we were able to get along these lives, right? Just worked out. When you vote by your memory ballot or on Tuesday the 16th, let's ask yourself, what is the candidate gonna offer, all right? I think my credentials speak for themselves. I work in the school every single day, this would be just an asset to the Eastport Area School District. I've lived this place for the last two decades, I understand its workings, I understand some problems that it has, and I think I have something to offer. Lastly, I want to feel the voters that my seat as director will mean you have a voice. I field calls daily, but I saw this thing flashing here this whole time, and I never go to sleep without turning a note call. I believe in transparency, and I will provide you with an open, honest response to your concern. I promise, on May 16th, I humbly ask for a vote for Matt Anderson.
Mr. Filodi?
Again, you get another thank you. It was very nice, we were a little apprehensive, as far as five minutes before we came here and sat down, it was the how this group was gonna get along, but I'll tell you what, it was nice, it was enjoyable, the kids did well, and I just want to let everybody know, I am retired this time, I wasn't, I was working full-time when I served before, but now I'm looking forward to serving this school. I know we can do it, I know it can change, I know it could get better, and I'm just gonna start by voting. Thank you.
Missy Loz?
Hold on, very sorry.
Sorry, sorry, I'm having a problem with this.
It's not you, it's us.
Sorry. I want to thank everyone for everything that is done, I really, I think this was great, we all got along, and I hope we can, can continue, I hope we all work together so we can do a great job for this district. Thanks again, and thank the teachers for everything we do.
Miss Wompler?
I'd like to thank you all for having me and for listening to what I have to share. I would like to be able to affiliate the change between what we need for the district and our children and teachers, and to make sure that everything is how it's supposed to be, and I'm not gonna sit here and promise, say I promised that, because it takes a village to make it work.
Mr. Holtzman?
Okay, I'd like to thank my fellow candidates for being up here this evening, I think it's been a great opportunity for everybody, like to thank those that put the debate together, and for those folks who took the time to come here this evening. I used one word and then I'm gonna use it again, accountability, the first person to be held accountable is going to be beat by the general public and the voter and the taxpayer in this community. Most important thing, anyone that knows me knows that I'm fair and firm, that work with me in this city, I come from a family that has over 150 years of civil service in this community for police, fire, and educators within our district. I think that stands for something. Not only that, yes, I am the father of Dr. Mark Holtzman, who I am very proud of, and serve here as a superintendent, and I hope to continue and move forward with some of the policies and ideas that he had, because I think he was very successful and did a wonderful job for our community and for our children. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kellin?
Thank you, everybody, for attending, thank the candidates, teachers, and students for being involved in this process. I think you heard from everybody, everybody up here today, we all want to see the district move forward in the right direction. I think that we do need to get the district back into student-first mentality, put our resources together, ideas, to see them succeed, because when they succeed, the district succeeds, and I hope that I get your support on May 16th.
Mr. Lopredo?
How do I follow all that? First off, I do, I want to thank the committee for putting this together, I want to thank the students. Mr. McGrew said the students said they were nervous, didn't show it, I thought you done a fantastic job. I want to thank the staff, all the staff in our district, not just the teachers, I want to thank the custodians, I want to thank everybody that works for the Eastport Area School District, keep, continue to do what you do. Two weeks from today, May 16th, let's get out there and vote, let's you be the one to choose, nobody else. Thank you.
I've never had to turn the mic up in my life. It's the first time we did that. Okay, so in closing, first off, I want to thank the candidates, I know there was some scuttle through the community, through social media, and worrying how this was gonna turn out, how this was gonna happen. I assured my students and the staff that worked with me that we would do everything possible to make this as professional and as organized as possible, and the candidates, all 13, deserve their respect, and I think tonight, the 10 on the stage did an excellent job, regardless of what your party affiliation is, regardless of what you feel, their personal beliefs, et cetera, et cetera, I think we did deserve another round of applause. A couple, closing, other remarks, real quick, this was originally not supposed, and again, this was the first time for all of us doing this. Originally, it was not supposed to be broadcast and livestreamed, it was gonna be taped, and I'll be blunt and honest with you, we didn't know what to expect. I didn't know somebody was gonna shout something out, or somebody up here was gonna shout something out, and we were not gonna allow that in a learning environment with the students, so we were more concerned about doing that livestream. I think it went excellent, and it was livestreamed this evening. Me personally, I will be putting the link for this out to the candidates if they can spread out throughout that they want, on social media or if they want to do that. Also, the candidates will receive a copy tomorrow of the PowerPoint presentation that was on there, which will include the eight additional questions that we did not ask this evening. If you as constituents of the district want to approach them, that was the reasoning for tonight. There was some questions, even myself kind of cringed and thought, we probably could have worded that better, or maybe we should have done this one a little different, et cetera, et cetera. You can now, they will have accessibility to those questions, you can take those to them, you can continue on with the rebuttals. I know there's gonna be some criticism of tonight, and that comes with my territory, not the candidates up here, the students, or the staff. You know, feel free to, and I believe she put the last slide up here, it's in my student cell phone number, no, that's okay. So, you know, feel free to contact me if you have concerns, questions, things like that, maybe you have ideas for the next time or moving forward with this. But once again, I want to make sure that I thank the students, especially for participating this evening, the staff that made this possible, and the candidates that want to stay. Thank you, everybody.